I'd like to ask everyone to turn their phones on silent or turn them off. We do have quite a bit on the agenda today. And with that being said, I would like to ask Commissioner Brian, I'm gonna ask Gary Sloan. So Gary is retiring this year. We're gonna ask Gary if he would do us the honor of say the invocation.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Tackett.
Here.
Commissioner Booth.
Here.
We have a quorum that we are ready to proceed. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Jason Tackett if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the minutes of the May 6, 2022, meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Before we move on into the other items on the agenda, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Tackett, and Commissioner Booth on their primary election results. And also, just want to briefly thank the people of Pike County for allowing me the opportunity to serve as Pike County Judge Executive again for another four-year term. We've got a lot of work to do. Our staff was back at work the day after the election. We've got some good news to talk about here today. We're gonna have some other really good news here in a few days. We're working on a four-year plan for the next term, and then we're also working on an eight-year plan. One of the things I think that we have to look at is long-term planning and to set goals that we have to benchmark every year. You know, what we plan on getting done with the landfill, what we plan on having with our road department, what we plan on having done in terms of economic development, our trail system. And it's gonna be a big project to put this together. And I think that, you know, we can't just look at the next six months or the next four years. I think we need to be looking long-term on how to make county government sustainable and to create jobs. It's been, you know, an honor to have worked with these three gentlemen for the last three and a half years. I've had to make some hard decisions. They've had to make some hard decisions, and that comes with being in a leadership position. The decisions that we make here at times may not be popular, but in the long-term, I think, will prove that they were in the best interest of the county and were well-reasoned, well-thought-out, well-researched. And again, I just want to thank these gentlemen here because what we've been able to accomplish in the last three and a half years was not something I did. This was not an "I," it was a "we" in Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Tackett, and Commissioner Booth. We've worked closely together to move this county forward. We're working on this plan together, and I think that this long-term plan, that working with the commissioners that we're gonna have in place, will be something that will be a roadmap and a model, maybe not only for our county, but for other counties as we look to try to develop tourism and economic development in eastern Kentucky. So, gentlemen, thank you all. It's been a pleasure, an honor serving with you, and look forward to the next term as well. All right. So, the next item is the adoption of a resolution supporting the Kentucky Wildlands and Eastern Kentucky Pride's application to the National Park Service for a National Heritage Area This was requested by Pike County Pride. It's rather lengthy, and I'm gonna dispense with the necessity for reading this resolution. Would there be a motion to adopt the resolution? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution of the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of a local government economic development fund, House Bill 1 grant application for $562,564 in local government economic development, single-county coal severance tax, to be used as the matching funds for the EDA grant and the AMLR grant for the Wolf Pit Industrial Technology Park infrastructure project. Authorizing and directing the Pike County Judge Executive to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by DLG to carry out the project and authorizing the judge executive to act as the authorized correspondent for the project. This is Sharon's application. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. I'm gonna skip over to the next item until after the executive session. Next item is item four, which is the adoption of a resolution supportive of Kentucky Homeland Security Grant for standing, for a standing, I'm sorry, standby generator for the Belfry Volunteer Fire Department, authorization for the judge executive to execute all related documents. Again, this is a grant Sharon's working on. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution supportive of Kentucky Homeland Security Grant for a threat ID portable powder, liquid, and gas phase identification for the Pike County Emergency Management, and authorization for the judge executive to execute all related documents. This, again, is Sharon's application. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is the adoption of a resolution supportive of Kentucky Homeland Security Grant Program for Pike County Emergency Communication System Rebuilding and Update Plan, Phase Three, for Pike County Emergency Management and Authorization for the judge executive to execute all related documents. This is also an application Sharon's worked on. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is the approval to apply for a trust, I'm sorry, a TRUUS Foundation Community Reinvestment Act mini-grant to use for purchasing signs for the Flatwoods ATV Trail System. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is the adoption of a resolution support of the Division of Waste Management's Waste Hire Grant in the amount of $4,000 for grant period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and authorization to execute all documents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. All right. The next item is the approval to execute Third Amendment to the ground lease for the Carl D. Perkins Apartments. I think Roy, you've reviewed this, is that correct? And everything is in order? All right. Is there a motion to approve the Third Amendment to the ground lease for the Carl D. Perkins Apartments?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the approval to execute the ground less or estoppel certificate for the Carl D. Perkins Apartments. I assume, Roy, you've also reviewed that one in conjunction with the ground lease, is that correct?
I have.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the ground less or estoppel certificate for the Carl D. Perkins Apartments?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is the discussion of the hog trial location and potential action. And this is upgrade that was planned for the hog trial cabin so it can be used as a voting location. Paul, would you like to give us an update on that real quick?
We have not been able to do nothing to the hog trial.
Okay.
It looks...
This is Brian, I'm not sure who asked, who had asked.
Yeah.
Brian wanted this put back on there. And, you know, how many men do you have working in public works?
I've got two men right now. We've got one hard.
I mean, it's the same thing we had to do with the Phelps Community Center. It may be that we just need to get with Greg and either get an estimate from somebody on it. If we think it's gonna be over $30,000, we need to go ahead and we'll have to put it out for bid. That's just, you know, a lengthier process.
Oh, I don't think it'd have to be put out for bid because the only thing that we need is a handicap ramp, a few rails put around it, and just the widening of one door.
Widen both doors.
Yeah, just, but there's just very little, you're talking about very little work. And we're...
Who put that cabin up?
Mark White put...
Mark White.
Mark White. How about we do this? How about we just get an estimate from Mark White to do this work, bring it back to the court at the next court meeting?
She, but now, in order to get this in for, so they can use it this November, she said it needs to be done ASAP since we could. I mean, it's, it's, I don't think you're looking at a whole lot of dollar-wise, just for a handicap ramp off, off the blacktop and to the side up there. You're only talking about maybe $3,000 or $4,000 in material.
Yeah, we price material.
And you're not gonna hit the...
The big problem, I think, is what Mark discussed, though, is this is a, you know, a period-correct cabin. It doesn't have standard doors for it. So you're gonna have to make some pretty, it's not, I mean, you're gonna have to make some special modifications to make these doors work, is that true?
Yeah, we have to make some modification on the doors.
Yeah, but it's not, nothing major. I mean, I, I think if, you could probably, I mean, you could give him to if want to, but I mean, the longer you delay it, I, looks, from what I've looked at, and I was over with him looking at it, it's not gonna take no big deal of adjusting it out to get it to work. The width is pretty well there with a small adjustment, it's just the height that needs a little bit. I don't think you're gonna, I mean, I don't know how long it'll take him to get there, but you, any standard contractor should be able to go in there and just fix it out with Paul kind of watching over.
If Commonwealth did it, I would rather have the person that built it do the project.
Right.
Because they know the construction.
But how long will it take them to...
Well, I mean, we can call him today. Can you call him at the break?
Yeah.
Well, just go in there and call him at the break while we're in...
Yeah, because this is something she said, and I know this is important to Bob Scott name, this is something that can't wait. She needs, this is something that needs to be done ASAP to get it submitted to the state so they can use it this November.
Have you, have you got Commonwealth's number?
Yes, I got Mark's.
Why don't you go call and see when he could get us an estimate and get, you know, and if we would approve it at the next court meeting? If it's not that big a deal, you should be able to get it done by middle of June.
Yeah, it's not no major, major work.
It's not, yeah, it's not no major work. I mean, it's something that could be done within less than a week.
Well, at the break, let's, can you go call him and see when he could go there and do that?
Yeah.
Get us an estimate on it, because we'll have to get an estimate and then we'll have to approve it.
Well, unless you're under $30,000 in fits.
Well, you still have to approve it.
Yeah, you're not, I'm telling you, you're not talking about a lot of money.
I mean, I wouldn't think it would be much, but...
No, you're not, you're not talking, because we could, we'll be able to salvage the doors, we'll be, you know, we'll be able, we're not taking that much out of the doorway, so it's not no, it's not no major issue.
The most money you're gonna spend is in the ramp.
Right.
Let's just call him at the break, and you can come back and update us if you can get a hold of it.
Okay.
All right. Next item is the second reading of a proposed ordinance amending the Pike County Administrative Code, Section 462 Sick Leave. Roy, can you just give us an update? Give, present the second reading, and then we'll be ready for action.
Okay. Judge, under Section 462 Sick Leave, under subsection 2A, it's gonna add to it visits to after-hours clinics, urgent care clinics, or physician appointments with a doctor's note. That's the language that's being added.
This, this helps our employees by giving them more leeway to use their sick leave so they don't have to use personal days or vacation days. So would there be a motion to adopt this amendment, the section 462?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the second reading of the 2022-2023 budget of the Pike County Fiscal Court. This has been approved by the Department of Local Government, correct, Frankie? The first reading? All right. So it is ready for action. Roy, if you would just briefly give a summary of the total expenditures and the total revenues, I'll give a brief explanation, and then we'll ask if there's a motion to adopt.
Judge, we did have the public hearing on the portions of the budget that had to have a public hearing this morning. The revenues that will come in for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 are projected to be $62,445,303. That's our revenue. Our expenses are, it projected to be $62,445,303.
Now, by way of explanation, that does not mean that the county has $60 million in recurring tax revenue. That is grant money that's been included. It's grants that we've applied for that we may never get. It's FEMA projects that are pending. So that probably is somewhat of a, I'm trying to think of the right word to use. It would probably be somewhat confusing if you were not familiar with the budget process. If you get right down to the recurring revenue, and you've take out the grant money and some of the special projects that we have in here that we may or may not get funded, you're probably looking at somewhere $25,000, $26 million, frankly. Would that be a reasonable estimate of what the actual, when you factor out all the grants, all the COVID relief funds and so forth?
Our budget expenditures for this year so far is about $35 million, and that includes what we've spent on grants.
So when you look at budgets from one year to the next, those numbers can be somewhat deceiving or misleading because you have to dig into the numbers and look at the grants and so forth. So is there a motion to adopt the 2022-2023 budget of the Pike County Fiscal Court?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the first reading of a proposed ordinance adopting ENJ Road into the county road system. Colonel Downey, would you please present the first reading? This will not be ready for action until the publication and the second reading, but please proceed.
Okay. It's been determined that it's in best interest of the public for the Pike County Fiscal Court to formally accept public roads in the official county road system. And KRS 178.0101, subsection 1, subsection B defines how that's to be done. Now, therefore, be ordained by the Fiscal Court of Pike County, Commonwealth of Kentucky, Section 1, that the following road, being public in nature, be in, is hereby formally and officially accepted into the Pike County road system and shall hereafter be a part of said system. It's in District 2, the road name is ENJ Road, its length is 422 feet, and it's 15 feet wide. And landowners have attached their affidavit's acknowledgements to that.
All right. This ordinance adopting ENJ Road into District 2, the Pike County road system will be in order after publication, and assuming we can get that done before the next court meeting in June. I do need to point out that that first regular meeting in June will have to be conducted at some point as a special meeting because that is the meeting, the week of the Kentucky County Judge Executive and Magistrates and Commissioners Association Conference that, that will take place the first week of June. So we'll be working on that. But this should be in order at that time. There's something I do want to bring up, just by way of communication. I've had an opportunity to, over another issue that came up in Commissioner Tackett's district some time ago about a bridge and whether it qualified to be in the road system. I have read all of the statutes under KRS 178. I'm not sure that we don't need to take a close look at the county ordinance on county roads. I'm not sure there has been some statutes that have been passed in the last several years. One of those statutes that says that a road has to serve a public purpose. It can't just be, for instance, Upper Cloy. You know, that's a county road. And we're getting into this thing where, you know, if it has two houses, I'm not sure that's a public purpose. I think that, under the statute, the statute doesn't look in terms of the number of homes. But there's some other things that are in that statute that says that in order to take a road into the county road system, it has to meet the county's construction standards when it's taken in. That's one thing, I think. Is that correct, Fabian? There's a whole bunch of statutes that have been adopted, and I think that in order to make sure that our ordinance is in compliance with the state, with KRS Chapter 178. KRS Chapter 178 is, in my opinion, for lack of a better term, it's a hodgepodge of thoughts that have been just rolled into some statutes. They're confusing. In my opinion, the legislature needs to take a hard look at how you define a county road, what qualifies as a county road. And you can read some of these statutes in different ways. I've been, I've had communications with, I think it's Will Fogel, who's the general counsel in the Transportation Cabinet. And sometimes when you call and you ask Frankfurt for advice, depending on who you talk to, you get maybe conflicting opinions. Until the legislature clears this up, Roy, I'd like for you and Mr. Keen sit down with Mr. Little over the next few days, and let's look at those statutes in KRS Chapter 178, look at the county's ordinance on county roads, and figure out if we need to make some changes to that ordinance in order to be in compliance with some of the newer changes to Chapter 178, in case anybody questions that, in case it ever comes up. But I do think that's something that we need to do, so. Any thoughts on that, gentlemen?
It's like I've got a couple of roads, too, that they say it's not in the system, but we've maintained these roads. You know, I mean...
We've not maintained them since we've been in.
No, we've not maintained them since we've been in.
Well...
But they're still, it's on our road systems.
One of the biggest problems we've had is people who say, well, that road's been maintained by the county, or that bridge has been worked on by the county. And when we look at the records, it's not in the, in the county road system. And we've taken the position that, you know, we're not gonna do illegal work. And somebody said, well, you know, are you saying somebody did illegal work in the past? I'm saying, I can unequivocally say that roads were worked on and bridges were worked on that we cannot prove are in the county road system. That does not mean that they may not have been adopted in, and the record-keeping was just that bad. But if I don't have a record...
Well, I think that's a lot of the problem, Judge. The record-keeping was bad.
And, you know, we're a court of record, just like, you know, everything we do is, we're a court of record. And I think is the proper term. And if we don't have documentation to back that up, we can't legally work on it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think any of us want to go to federal prison for doing a favor for somebody just because something was done illegally in the past or in violation of the statutes in the past doesn't justify us doing it now. And I think if Roy and Kevin could sit down with Fabian and present something to the court on what the requirements are under KRS Chapter 178 to be adopted into the road system, one of the things I think the legislature wanted to do was to make sure that expensive private problems were not passed off to the taxpayer. For instance, if there's a bridge that's in poor condition and it's not up to the county's maintenance standards or construction standards, and it's brought into the system, now you've taken a private problem and you've put it over on the taxpayers. So, I mean, we want to be able to help people, we want to be able to take roads in, but I do think we need to take a look at what's, some of the requirements are, and make sure that our ordinance is just up to the state standards.
I think some of these roads that's been took in in the past, and we have maintained them, took care of them, we need to decide and take it completely out of the system. You know, just because the state haven't, hasn't given us a number, you know, that needs to be took out of our county road system.
Well, Fabian has, we've, we've cleaned up a lot of these roads.
It's hard to know that we have to, that we have to clean up next. It's gonna be, guess what, the road, the road.
And that's gonna be a kind of lengthy process. Then, you know, once COVID, every kind of thing kind of shut down, we couldn't get people in and out. We have to sit down with the foreman, and we have to go over these roads that, that need to be taken out. And then I would submit, you know, the, the record to you guys to, to take all these roads out of the system that, that shouldn't be there. And there's a lot.
You know, we want to make sure that we're doing everything by the book, but we also want to make sure that, you know, our goal is to help people, to make sure that there are problems out there that need to be taken care of. We want to make sure that we can legally take care of them. I just want to, also, if you look at those statutes, there may be some ways that, you know, it would give us more flexibility on when a road could, you know, could be taken in. But I think that, I'm not sure that the current county ordinance accurately reflects what state law requires.
Well, that's what we've run into, right, Fabian? We've got a county road number, we don't have a state.
We don't use, we, we don't use that county road number at all. Since, since I've been here, I've quit. We don't use that because it, actually, that county road number didn't mean anything other than for the county. If you submit anything for state funding, you have to...
A lot of the roads were not submitted to the state.
Or they couldn't have been put in. But here's the bottom line. You cannot get funding, I do not, the, the road department does not get credit. Part of our, part of our budget is based on our road mileage. So any road that we're working that does not have a C R number, we don't get credit for. You can't put in for any type of funding.
No discretionary.
No discretionary, no flex, no, even if there was a washout come, if there's a washout, you know FEMA, they won't give you assistance on a road that does not have the C R number.
Commissioner Robertson, we found an ordinance back years ago, I mean, I'm talking thirty, probably thirty-seven, thirty-eight years ago, where a whole list of roads were supposedly taken in. No descriptions, no lengths, no locations, no mile, I mean, it would have a mileage, but it wouldn't have.
Yeah, but well, it didn't have lengths.
We can't, we can't, we have no idea where some of these roads are. Is that a fair assessment?
That is true.
And so this is part of the process that we've been trying to clean this up. But I do think it would help if we took our county ordinance, took the state statutes and made sure that what we are doing is a way to protect us, to protect the taxpayers, just to make sure that our ordinance doesn't need to be cleaned up to match what the state says.
That's kind of like what Rich Ornstein told me.
It does need that, though.
Because, you know, I'm going to say, I'm going to say this again, if I had ever had this brought to my attention when I'd been in legislature, I would have introduced a bill. This statute is really, there's a bunch of statutes that don't make a lot of sense to me, the way they read. And, I mean, if you, if you sat down and read chapter one seventy-eight, you would be scratching your head after it was over with because it's, it does not give counties much guidance on, it gives a few limitations, but it doesn't give you a lot of guidance on what you can and can't do. So. All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to skip over treasurer's business right now. We do have some awarding of bids, is that right, Greg? All right, come on up.
I do have several things, Judge. First off, we had a bid opening on May twelfth for bid number two-two dash two-zero-two-two for two structured demolitions and reclamation, and site reclamation. This is flood mitigation project on two different sites that's being done through a grant. We had three bidders. J M S Services bid on site one, eighty-two Sullivan Street, Pinson Fork, sixty-five-hundred dollars, and site number two, three-four-nine-zero Pond Creek Road, Pinson Fork, for fourteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Praeter Construction on site one bid twelve thousand nine hundred dollars and on site two, fifteen thousand four hundred dollars. Builder Construction bid site one, ninety-eight-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and site two, fourteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It's my recommendation that we award the bid on both sites to J M S Services, being the lowest bidder on both sites.
All right. Is there a motion to award bid number twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-two for two structured demolitions and site reclamation to J M S Services on site one for six thousand five hundred and site two for fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion, seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Oh, sir.
Is there a deadline on this, on this to be cleaned up or?
Usually these projects have a thirty-day time limit. I think Jimmy was still working through some, an acquisition process of some time.
It's just like a garbage dump?
No, this is.
These are two homes.
Two homes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Creek has migrated back to underneath.
So we have a motion, second. Any other question or discussion, seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Please proceed.
We had a bid opening on May thirteenth on bid number two-three dash two-zero-two-two, Pikeville Senior Citizens Center Demolition Project. We had five bidders. Builder Construction bid seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-one cents. J M S Services bid nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Praeter Construction bid twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. Commonwealth Building and Construction bid sixty-five thousand and H two O Construction bid forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to Builder Construction for a bid price of seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-one cents.
And they're hauling this to the landfill, correct?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to award bid number twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-two for the demolition on the Pikeville Senior Citizens Building to Builder Construction for seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-one cents?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion, seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
We had a bid opening on May nineteenth on bid number two-four dash two-zero-two-two for landfill litter fence. I think this is something that the, our inspector has recommended that we have going through our re-permitting phase. We don't want to have an inspector issue at our landfill. This was something new to me, they, the research I've done, they kind of look like a big soccer goal, really is what they look like. They're twenty-five feet wide and fifteen foot high and they connect together, there's five of them, so they have a hundred and twenty-five foot span. And they have like fencing in them, so anything that blows off the top is going to be caught by that and not go into other areas. I have two, two bids were received. Meta Technologies from Jackson, Michigan for a price of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and Southwest Sales Company from Rogersville, Rogers, Arkansas for forty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to Meta Technologies for a bid price of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a motion to award bid number twenty-four dash twenty-twenty-two to Meta Technologies of Jackson, Michigan for thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question or discussion, seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next, I, Mr. Fannin.
Something that we are in need of, that is in the budget, capital budget for twenty-two, twenty-three year, is a backhoe. We're paying a monthly rental on another backhoe right now, so the sooner we can buy one, we can eliminate that, that monthly cost. The one that they have right now that they are renting is set up like Fabian Little, our road commissioner, wants. It's the exact machine that he says he's interested in. They can have us one here, like this one, inspect out in September. The actual list price of this machine is one hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. It is on our Kentucky Master Agreement, which gives it a discount of forty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Boyd Equipment has also give us another discount of seventy-five hundred and seven dollars and forty-three cents. That gives our subtotal with options of one hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Now, there are some additional options we have with this. We can put an extended four-year, four-thousand-mile premium warranty on it for three thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents. We can also put a forty-eight-month, four-thousand-hour service agreement on it, which means they will come and do all the, all the service, all the oil changes and that type of thing. That cost would be sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-three cents. That would give the total cost of the machine with the premium warranty and the service agreement at one hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and ten dollars and eighty-three cents. That is if we include the premium warranty and the, and the forty-eight-month, four-thousand-hour service agreement.
Which I think would be a wise.
I think it'd be a very wise decision, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion, this is state contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to purchase this backhoe with the option and service agreement as set forth by Mr. Fannin from Boyd Cat for the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and ten dollars and eighty-three cents?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion, seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
Something else that we are in kind of desperate need of, we are paying a monthly rental on also, is on an excavator at our landfill. We have some major issues with the excavator that we have. We actually had Boyd Equipment come up and take a look at it. All the, all the engine specs are way below what they're supposed to be. It's recommended that we either replace the engine or rebuild the engine. We got a cost for replacement engine that would, we cost about twenty-nine thousand dollars. We also have some fuel issues.
How old is the excavator that's up there?
It's a two thousand nine model. It's been there quite a while. Like I say, it's got engine problems, it can cost twenty-nine. It's got a fuel issues, which may cost quite a bit of money to get back up to par. Also has some hydraulic issues. Part of the cab is mashed in from some kind of previous accident. Doesn't have air conditioning. There are a lot of the switches and sensors that don't operate. The thing is, we could spend eighty or ninety thousand dollars on this excavator, getting it back up to par, we'd still have an old excavator that could break down at any time. Going through the restructuring of our landfill, we don't want to get in a position where we don't have an excavator.
Is this, is this John Deere on state contract price?
Yes. This is primarily used for loading dirt in our trucks for a daily fill or cover. This excavator, the, with the options, with the thumb and other things that we're going to get on it, the total cost was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars. The Kentucky Master Agreement gives us a forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollar and thirty cent discount. Boyd Equipment has also given us an additional, additional discount beyond the master agreement of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. That gives us a subtotal of one hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. We can upgrade the warranty to a, to a forty-eight-month, four-year powertrain warranty for a thousand and eighty dollars. Something else that I just got the quote on this morning is if we put a forty-eight-month, four-thousand-hour service agreement on it, the cost of that would be sixty-eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents. The lead time on this is, they have one that we could have in, we could get in June, which is just a month or so away.
We don't, we don't have that document in the.
Correct. You have the document, the only thing that isn't in yours is the, the service agreement of eighty, of sixty-eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents. So if we add that sixty-eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents service agreement into this, the total cost would be one hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents, after about a eighty thousand dollar discount from master agreement and Boyd. This is for a Caterpillar three-seventeen. The one that we're using now is a three-twenty. I've been told really we don't have to go back with a three-twenty, it's a little bit bigger than what we need. I also got a quote from John Deere on a John Deere one-sixty excavator. The price on theirs with just the extended warranties, one hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars. So it's, so it's more expensive than the Caterpillar, which is something that we haven't seen in the past. Usually, usually the Caterpillar equipment is a little bit more expensive, but because of the extra, almost thirty-two thousand dollar discount that Boyd gave us on this piece of equipment, you know, with addition to the Kentucky Master Agreement discount, it actually puts this machine a little bit less expensive than the John Deere.
Is there a motion to purchase the, Greg, give me that purchase price with the warranty?
With the extended warranty and the service agreement, the total price is one ninety-four six eighty-one sixty-nine.
Okay. Is there a motion to purchase this Caterpillar excavator for the landfill for the sum of one hundred and ninety-four thousand six eighty-one sixty-nine from Boyd Equipment?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any question or discussion?
Yes, I have a question. The bucket on this current unit is relatively new, did you mention that? Yeah, I did not mention it here, we have discussed it. So we're going to, the plan is to take that bucket and save that bucket, is that correct? We can save that bucket, but that bucket will not work on this. It will not, okay. All right, that's my question.
The plan would be to auction off the older excavator?
I would think so, yes, Judge.
At the auction this fall?
I would think so, yes.
Would that be something the court, what's the?
Does this machine, has it got like any guards on it to keep the salvage from, or the garbage from getting in it, picking up in the tracks and stuff?
You know, Ronnie, I didn't ask that question, but I'm not sure that this excavator will be working in the garbage a whole lot. I think maybe it's used for mostly loading dirt in our trucks for field. Might, I think Larry's here, he can probably explain it a lot better than I can.
It's mainly going to be used for loading dirt in the trucks, but they are from time to time that we do have to put the machine in the garbage to excavate, you know, an old pit out to start a new pit. So they are times that it does get garbage in the tracks.
Well, do we need to make any, do they have any extra protection we can put on this thing?
Actually, I have another guy that can tell us that, I think. I think James Akers is here somewhere, if he could come up. Could you come up, James? This is our Boyd Cat representative.
Is there a way to put a guard over the, the tracks to make sure that it doesn't get picked garbage up, or is there any way to prevent that?
I don't think there's, there may be something we can customize and put on there. Here's the issue with the undercarriage. You're not going to keep everything out of there. This got the belly pans to keep the breeze from getting up and under the bottom of it, which is the most important, keep it away from the heat, away from the engine, prevent fires, things like that. But as far as the undercarriage, where it's moving constantly, if you put any extra guarding on there, the only thing you're going to do is keep that guarding, keep the garbage in, it can't come out without taking it out. For that application, that's, I mean, that's something we could probably come up and retrofit something, but that's something that I wouldn't recommend.
Larry, how often, how often is the excavator off of cover dirt and actually in the garbage? Is that common?
The only time it is, is when we're changing pits. You know, we usually try to keep a smaller than a hundred by hundred pit. You know, say it takes you one month to fill that whole pit. Well, it's going to be in the garbage for approximately one day, digging old garbage out to put new garbage in. And then it'd be a month, you know, a month or longer down the road before it's ever back into the garbage digging again. So it's not like it's going to be an everyday thing.
Yeah, I defer to the expert right here, I think probably we.
For the application, you're, whatever you do, other than completely sealing it in, which is not possible, you're only going to cause more wear in the future because when you, when that garbage, when what little bit of garbage gets in there, it's going to be extremely hard to get out and that's going to cause more wear.
I just know we talked about when we get a new dozer, they put guards on it to kind of.
The dozer guarding is a little different. I mean, you've got the guarding under the, undercarriage, even the undercarriage on the dozers is not completely sealed. It's made where the garbage will roll out. The extra guarding is for the belly pans, the compartments, things like that to keep the trash from getting up around the engine and the powertrain.
But the excavator already has that.
It's got the belly pans and things, it don't have, I mean, it's sealed up as good as you're going to, as you're going to need it to be.
Larry, how bad's the current excavator?
We're not even using it right now. Cut, you, you, it won't even start without using the ether. You have to use a can, approximately half a can of starting fluid just to get the thing started. When you do, it smokes a whole lot, you don't have a whole lot of power. I mean, it's just.
I mean, it's just, when we were told to park it till Boyd come and checked it out, we just left it parked. We actually have a rental right now. It's the only way we're getting by.
What are we paying for the rental?
I don't have that information with me.
I had to roll down at the office. I'm thinking fifty-some hundred a month. I'd have to go back to...
It won't take long to pay for a new excavator at that, so. Alright, so do we have a motion, uh, we have a motion second by Commissioner Robertson, second by Commissioner Tackett? Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, James. Something else that we're in need of that is in the budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year is a hot box. Um, got a quote on this, six-ton slip-in hot box, which is the type that, that Fabian wants. Uh, it is on a Sourcewell contract. Uh, delivery time, one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty days. So we're still kind of at the end of our season being able to get this, but I think this is something that's used primarily for, uh, pothole patching and that type of thing. So that, we do a lot of that work in the winter also, from what I understand.
You, you can take old blacktop, put it in this thing, heat it up, and make, uh, you know, use it to pothole patch. Probably better material than what you can... Fabian, can you use it all year long to do that? Is this the one that sprays Fabian? You can spray with it and spray it? It's not the, uh... You can just put the old material in and it'll melt it? Mm-hmm. So it's not that, it's not that what's on the trailer or nothing like that? So if we had any old blacktop, they'll pick this up and put it in there, use it? But then the, the winter time... And we've had people ask why at the end of the day that we've had to pour this material out because it's cold, you can't use it. And you know, if you've wasted a couple ton a day or more, this thing will pay for itself because you can go back and use that material for your pothole patching and not have to go to the blacktop plant and buy more material. Is one of them enough? Alright.
Does it, it, it doesn't carry, it doesn't carry oil with it where you could add oil into your mixture, does it? Okay.
It'll save money long-term if, you know, it'll save a lot of this blacktop that we're not able to use.
Right.
Cause it gets cold. And it's not just into the Phelps area, but over into Brian's, you know, uh, in Palm Creek. I mean, we had a gentleman message me the other day because there was, looked like a couple tons that was poured, you know, dumped out. But it's got cold at the end of the day, you know, or...
Right.
It'll save us money on our pothole patching and, you know, repair, temporary repairs, like if you have to put a drain or something in. Alright, is there a motion? Is this again state contract price, Greg?
It is state contract. Original cost, this is fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. The Sourcewell discount pri, discount is, uh, seventy-nine hundred and seventy dollars, which gives it a balance of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. There is fifteen hundred and eighteen dollars with the freight bringing this from Indianapolis, Indiana. It's a total, uh, with freight cost of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Alright. Is there a motion to purchase the Seal Master hot box, uh, for the sum of forty-nine thousand, three thirty-eight ninety? I'm sorry, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars even?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, I may, I have one other thing I need to talk to you about, um... Something that slipped my mind. I can't remember what it was. We're, we're gonna take a break here in a second anyway. It'll come to my mind for then. Uh, Pike County Road Commissioners recommended road maintenance list in the, uh, Road Supervisors Report. We have the, uh, open work orders list. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Little, you wanna come up and just give us a quick update on the Road Department and let us know how the, um, weed mowing's coming along? I know we're getting a lot of folks that are calling with concern over that.
And we are. Uh, we've got, uh, well, the beginning of the day, we've had two mowers down. Uh, one of the new mowers, uh, there was a problem with a seal, uh, that was, should be fixed this week. The, uh, then I just, now just, JJ just messaged me and another one of the, uh, mowers in Commissioner, uh, Robertson's area is down now with a, uh, with a leak, hydraulic leak, so I'll have to go pick it up. Yeah, it is one of the new ones. So, uh, so anyway, we are mowing. It's just, uh, we, uh...
These mo, mowers are fairly new. Are, I mean, are these kind of problems normally to be expected?
I don't think so. And we've had problems out of these joysticks on these, uh, on these mowers that, uh, I don't think should be happening. Uh, the toggle switches, you know, you have the, uh, control on your joystick. Well, those, those buttons or those toggle switches are, uh, are failing. And, but they're failing fast. I mean, I've got, I don't know, some of the mowers have had probably three or four sets replaced already. You know, and, and those, like you said, those are all new mowers. I just don't feel we should be having that type of problem with them.
Are, are, are they replacing these at no charge?
Uh, no. Actually, I think what's happened because it was taken so long to try to get these fixed. Now, I may be wrong. Uh, we'd probably need to talk to Darren Moore on this, but it was taking so long to get those toggles, these switches in from the manufacturer that Darren had found a switch or something on his own that he has been replacing these with just so that they can replace them theirself and get them back on the road, cause it was taking a week or so.
I think we need to call the rep to come up here and tell me why with mowers that are not even a year old.
And I think so too. And you know, that's not the John Deere now. That is the brand of them, cause it's the...
But we're having trouble with the, with the mowers too, with the tractor.
Every problem right now is with the mower, not the, not, it's not with the tractor. It's not the tractor, it's with the mower attachment.
The leak is not on the tractor.
No, it's out on the, on the hydraulic pump that turns our mower. Now, I don't know exactly where the one is today that, because I didn't, JJ just sent me that, but I'm assuming it's probably gonna be out there on the deck also. That's where the other one was.
So we do need a mower or two more? We need one more mower?
We do.
Greg, could you look for, see what you could find and maybe look for a different brand of, uh, of, uh...
I tell you, uh, Mr. Robertson, I had saw at, uh, one of the vendors, a, uh, a machine that I think we might want to look at. I like...
Can I see that?
That wasn't it. I don't think that was the machine that we looked at. The one I was talking about had the, it mowed in front. Remember we had that, oh, is that it? I thought it was green.
Let's see that.
Okay.
Can I see it?
That may be it.
I was kindly a step ahead of you. I think that, uh, in Nashville, I've got the number at the store, uh, it's got some big mowers. Twenty-foot, uh, mow, mowers in stock.
Yeah.
Well, could we go look at one of these?
We have looked. Well, we've seen the brochure.
Is, are they out of Indiana? Am I right? Ohio, maybe? Indiana or Ohio?
But that's, that's a multiple purpose machine though too, Judge. It does a little more than just mow.
It does.
What else does it do?
You can get a brush attachment for it.
Yeah, blade.
Broom, rotary deck mower?
This, this machine will... Yeah, it, it will mow in front of you too.
A saw. Did they get that one, uh, deck changed over?
They did. They do, they, he messaged this morning and it's, the deck is on.
Okay.
Uh, reason it's, that machine has not been delivered is my driver...
Now, let me ask you a question. This is kind of mower. How much training would somebody have to have? Cause it is, yeah, it's got four-wheel steering on it.
It can.
Let's go look at one.
And the thing, the, the, the big plus on that one is that you, on that machine, you have the ability to mow in front of you and that...
What's the, what's the, what's the cost of one of these?
Yeah, something like that.
That's quite a bit more than what we're paying for the... But Fabian, Greg, can you all call this rep on these John Deeres and get them up here? Well, I mean...
Not John Deere, it's the attachment.
CM, CM, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't think so. I thought they were all the same. Yeah, I think that they're all the same.
Can, can, let's, can we get, can you get me an update before the end of the day of what's the problem? And Greg, before, can you call today and tell this guy, we want these things taken care of or they're gonna be hearing from Mr. Keane on this?
That is a problem.
Well, it is. I mean, you know, when you buy something brand new and it doesn't work and, you know, uh, or it's not reliable, then that's...
These started failing within two months of the fir, the first one we bought.
Well, let's put them on notice, get with Mr. Downey. Greg, I want you to pull the warranty up on these, okay? Cause some of these we didn't get into August of last year. Is that correct, Fabian?
Right.
And, and listen what I'm saying. I wanna know what the warranty on those were, cause if these, if they're already giving us trouble, Roy, I want you, if it's still within warranty, I want a, a certified letter to them, putting them on notice of the, of the warranty problem, okay? Thank you. Alright. Fabian, anything else? Alright. So we do have need for executive session. Kevin, you walked in right on time. Would you instruct the public in the court on the relevant provisions of Kentucky Open Meeting Law set forth in Carris Chapter sixty-one as it pertains to the entry into executive session by a fiscal court?
I will, and I apologize for just getting here. I've been in child support hearings, but relevant laws, Carris sixty-one, eight, ten, subsections C and F to discuss personnel and pending litigation.
Alright. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett? Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We will be in recess for executive session. We'll return shortly. We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson is her second. Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Uh, after, um, Personnel Matters, uh, it is my motion to approve hiring Joseph Stanley Jr.'s a weed mower at Road Lot Six at a three H rate of pay effective five, ten, twenty-two. To hire Thomas Farney as a weed mower at Road Lot Two at a three H rate of pay effective five, ten, twenty-two. To hire Zach Standifer as a CDL truck driver at Road Lot Three at a four H rate of pay effective five, seventeen, twenty-two. To hire James Joyce as a temporary laborer on the road, sorry, the special road crew at a three H rate of pay effective five, ten, twenty-two. To make the amendment of the Administrative Code, Section four, twenty-six, leave Section, uh, A retroactive starting April first, twenty twenty-two. And to hire William Smith as a loader at Solid Waste Lot One at a two H rate of pay effective five, eleven, twenty-two. I'm sorry, yeah, five, eleven, twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, uh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Um, we earlier, um, Eric, you wanna come up just real quick? Uh, this is, uh, matter we skipped over because I wanted to look at some things. The warning of the bid for the Phase One A Water System Project in the amount of seven hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents uh, for the Wolf Pit Industrial Technology Park. Um, is, um, this was, Greg, I think this went through the procurement process that's required by federal law. Is that correct, Eric? Okay. Uh, even though this is a county project, this money is predominantly, uh, about two point three million federal money. Uh, it appears under the, uh, project engineer's, uh, letter from Kevin Dammer-P at Palmer Engineering that the low bidder is Jones Contracting LLC. Obviously no relation, don't know who they are. Where are these folks from?
Uh, Floyd County, Lake County Community.
And, uh, that they are the low bidder at the amount of seven hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. Um... Is it your recommendation that they be awarded the bid?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was hoping that a Pike County company would have been the low bidder on this, um... But at least it's not an out-of-state corporation, so, um, are, is this company registered to do business in Pike County with our Occupational Tax Office?
Uh, it will be. Judge, we'll make sure of that.
Alright. Alright, is there a motion to approve awarding, uh, the bid for Phase One A Water System Project in the amount of seven ninety-four, eight, eighty, fifty for the Wolf Pit Industrial Technology Park to Jones Contracting LLC?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
No. Anything else, Eric?
No, sir.
Alright, we have Treasurers Business. Uh, Mr. Stacy, please proceed.
Authorize a fund-to-fund appropriation transfer for April twenty twenty-two to transfer one point three million from the ARPA Fund to the General Fund, to transfer two point five million from the ARPA Fund to the Road Fund, and to transfer five hundred thousand from the General Fund to the Jail Fund.
Is there a motion to authorize the fund to fund appropriations for April twenty twenty-two as stated by the Treasurer?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated May twenty-third and any other utility and telephone bills received before we run checks.
Is there a motion to authorize payment of the approval expenditure list dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two and any other utility bills received before checks are run?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other, uh, question, discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and the Clerks' twenty-five fifty report for April twenty twenty-two.
Um, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and Clerks' twenty-five fifty reports for April? Um, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Sheriff and Clerks twenty-five fifty reports for April? Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, any other question, discussion, see now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tag?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Alright. Uh, next item is, uh, Department Supervisors Comments, anything from anybody? We're gonna cut this thing short, I think Mr. Jackson, uh, has some information that would be of interest to the public.
Yes, Judge, um, the Small Business Administration, uh, has an office set up at, uh, Belfry Fire Department, um, for those that, uh, receive damages, uh, due to the flooding on New Year's Day. Uh, just got information today from them, uh, from their Public Information Officer. Uh, it's in each one of your packets, they'll be at the fire station from nine to six, uh, Mondays and Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, nine to four on Sat- on, uh, Wednesdays, and then ten to two on, on Saturdays. And they will be there through June the second. They're offering, uh, assistance, uh, low-interest loans, one point four, uh, three percent, up to thirty years, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for homeowners and up to forty thousand dollars for damages on contents, appliances, furniture, that type thing, and then, um, up to two million dollars for businesses, uh, for their loans. And that's at two point eight three percent. We've shared these on our Facebook page, uh, from the Emergency Management Office and, um, you know, any, anyone out there, there's also, um, an email address that they can call or, or they can email and there's a phone number on there for them also, so. We'll try to get these flyers out, like I say, just got it right before the court meeting from their Public Information Officer, so.
So if anybody that was flooded is interested in an SBA loan, they can go to the Pike County Emergency Management Facebook page.
Yes.
And the information's posted there, or they can call your office at, uh, six oh six, four three two, zero two one zero.
Sure.
Or they can call the judge's office at four three two, six two four seven, and that, uh, connection can be made. And we appreciate your hard work on this and hopefully, while we didn't qualify for individual assistance under this last storm event, this will be some mechanism for people to get help that they were flooded and didn't have flood insurance.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Little, anything, sir? Anything from the Trail Office, Mr. Atkins, Grants, Flood Plane, Solid Waste, Finance, Safety? Alright. Um, yes, sir. I was getting ready to get to you.
Okay.
You were next.
Uh, there is gonna be a memorial service for Rose Farley, who was a longtime clerk of the court here. It'll be one to two PM Sunday over at the Methodist Church in downtown Pikeville. And, uh, there will be a light meal after the service and her children will be in for it.
Thank you, sir. I did not know that they were having that and, uh, would, Rose was a dedicated employee, uh, of the court for many years and, uh, and, uh, that is, I'm glad you told us about that, thank you. Alright, Judge Hickman, anything, sir? Mr. Keane? Um, Commissioner Robertson, anything, sir?
No, just, uh, we're gonna have a holiday this, next Monday, everybody be safe, have a good time, be real careful.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Tackett, anything, sir? No joke, no, no jokes, please.
First, uh, first, I'd just like to let people know, uh, out in the county that, uh, we are, uh, working with, for the, to get the weeds cut, uh, Fabian's been working tireless on this, uh, so, and employees, uh, actually, actually, we've had some people with weed eaters. Uh, you know, we've had a little bit of, uh, problem with some of the mowers is, uh, like we was talking earlier, uh, some of the jacks is messed up or the, and, you know, that's just, that's just part of equipment. Uh, but we will, we will get it, just be a little patient and, and, uh, and we will get that, get it all taken care of. Uh, Judge, if, and if, if anybody has trouble, you know, I had to some person kindly, uh, call me out a little bit and I, I gave him my telephone number, but if anybody's has any problems or issues, if they need to get ahold of me, six oh six, nine three, nine twenty-one, fourteen. And, uh, you know, this court does work hard, you know, we, we work hard for the fire departments and rescue squads across this county, uh, may, maybe bring up, need, we heard anything on the radios or? Okay, alright, sounds good, uh. And, uh, you know, just, like I said, our guys do work hard, if we do make a mistake, we will, we will come back and fix it. That's one, that's one thing I do know. Uh, and, uh, I just congratulate you, uh, Judge, uh, Turkey, I meant, uh, Jones, uh.
I knew that was coming. I knew that was coming.
But that's all, thank you all, and I appreciate all that you, that, uh, District Two, uh, last Tuesday, they come out, so thank you all.
I knew that was coming. I just knew it, but you know what, they call people like me, right? They call me Judge. Alright. Oh, I mean, it's, you know, everybody thinks that, you know, I get, I get beat up in the court meetings. Thanks, I appreciate that. I don't know how you fuck up with that. What did I say next, right? I've, uh, yeah, we're not, come on now, I knew you were gonna give me a hard time today. Alright, Commissioner Booth?
Uh, Judge, I was, uh.
Just don't, just don't make fun of me, okay?
I just wanna thank our employees, they're, they're really doing a good job and it's getting hot, it's gonna be tough on our solid waste workers, so. Uh, but I hope everybody has a good holiday weekend coming up, uh, more of a weekend, I know there'll be a lot of people traveling and everything, so I just hope everybody has a safe and good weekend, spend some time with their family, that's all I've got, Judge.
Thank you, Judge, I do wanna say something, uh, ouch, sorry about that, uh. I spoke with, uh, last couple of weeks, Leo quite a bit and, uh, and Kenneth, uh, Robson both, uh. And we do need to keep them in our prayers. Leo, uh, thanked me and, and thanked the court and so did Kenneth the other day when I was talking to him. Uh, but these are, these are family we do need to keep in our prayers too this week, uh, is the Taylor family. You know, I don't, I don't like much talking about that, but that, uh, been three years ago, you know? But, uh, other than that, that, that's all I've got.
You, you know, uh, I'm glad you mentioned that, cause, you know, three years ago, um, you know, we suffered the, the loss, I think it was on May twenty-fourth, the day was three years ago, um, that Danny passed away. And it was a terrible tragedy and I made a commitment at that point in time, I would do everything that I could to make sure that we never had lost another employee or had another serious injury, and I wanna thank William Spears, our Safety Director, um, you know, it's not always been, uh, it's not always been popular even with employees about some of the safety protocols and, you know, when I went out on the job, uh, back during this last campaign and, and, you know, I wore a hard hat and I wore a reflective vest just because, you know, I'm held to the same standards, our commissioners are held to the same standards, OSHA doesn't differentiate between elected officials and, um, if you're an employee of the county. Uh, that was a terrible loss and I hope and pray that it's the last one. Uh, we've had three county employees, fiscal court employees that have, have lost their lives in the line of, of duty. And every day when our road crews go out, it's dangerous work, Fabian knows, Fabian's had some close calls himself. Our solid waste guys, every time that they stop a vehicle and they get out to load garbage up, they're running the risk of somebody not paying attention on a cell phone, texting or, you know, on drugs or, or, or under the influence of alcohol, not paying attention and, and hitting them, I mean, we've been very blessed that, that, uh, but we do wanna remember the Taylor family. And also, I'd just like to ask, um, to remember the family of Bev Smallwood, Bev has been a friend, uh, her sister Karen, close friends of mine for many, many years, Bev was an outstanding, uh, basketball player in high school, one of the best, uh, girls' basketball players to ever probably play in the fifteenth region. And, um, a United States Army veteran, uh, who passed away this week and we want to extend our sympathy to the, uh, to the, to the Smallwood family, so, um, would encourage everyone to, uh, have a, uh, good holiday week, we will have a special meeting for the first meeting in June. Uh, hopefully at that time, Commissioner Tackett won't be making fun of me again. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I do wanna say it's been an honor to serve as county judge and I look forward to representing and working for the people of this county for the next four, we've got a lot of hard decisions we have to make. We've made a lot of progress and we've got a lot of good things that we're working on, this trail system, I'm very optimistic that, that we're gonna be able to do some big things with the trail system. Economic development, I wanna thank Fabian, the Road Department, I mean, we've done more roadwork in the last three and a half years than the, probably the eight years before that. And, uh, we've still got a lot of work to do, well, thank you gentlemen for having the, uh, privilege of working with you for the last three and a half years. Uh, I've got, you know, this, the progress we've made is because of the staff, it's not because of me, we've got a tremendous staff. And I wanna thank Jeannie and Lisa and Frankie and all the employees that have worked so hard to help make, uh, to make this thing work and work better. Uh, and, um, you know, we got the county on good financial footing. We've got some big projects that we're working on, the Flood Wallet coal run, that's a big project. And then probably, uh, in a few months, we're gonna be, uh, putting out the, uh, the bid for the six million dollar first phase of the landfill expansion. We're, uh, we're just, you know, we're waiting on the drawings to be approved right now. Um, I think that's probably sometime up in the fall when we get the technical changes approved to the drawings. And then it'll be time to issue the bonds to pay for the construction of the landfill. And, um, so, you know, there's a lot of good things that we're doing to help give us a fighting chance in the future and, uh, I'm optimistic, so thank you all for tuning in and, um, anything else to come before the court today? If not, I'd like to ask Commissioner Booth if he would do the meddiction and, uh, then we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your heavenly Father, as we come before you today, dear Lord, thank you for watching over everyone that's here today, dear heavenly Father, and thank you, Lord, for watching over this court and every decision that we made here today, dear heavenly Father. For God with us all as we travel to our homes today, dear Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.